It being six thirty on Monday, April fourteenth, I hereby call the regular meeting of the Gardner School Committee to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, Mrs. Carmier.
Present.
Mrs. Hurst.
Present.
Mr. Lefranier.
Present.
Mrs. Ward-Layton.
Present.
Mrs. Palavin.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson.
Present.
Dr. Pellegrino.
Present.
And Mayor Hawke and Dr. Joyce West are here. Nora Morris, the student representative, is absent.
Thank you Director Hawke for being here with us today. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is open time for the general public. Is there anyone here from the general public who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to item C, the public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 school budget. This was posted with the Office of the City Clerk on April seventh at nine forty-two a.m. as required by the General Laws of the Commonwealth, beginning with the budget presentation by Dr. Pellegrino.
All right, so thank you for having me.
Sir. Like we had a choice.
So, you know, a lot of these slides seem familiar, but you'll see that things are definitely still changing for Gardner Public Schools. So, Mark, would you want to go over that?
One actually on this slide it should say updated April fourteenth today.
Yes, oh, yes. I changed a couple, I changed a couple slides. We were trying to make, we tried to make things clear, and I realized sometimes that I put in too many slides and it makes things more confusing. So, after practicing it one more time today with Mark Hawke, we decided to take out a couple slides and change one. Enrollment. As you can see, a steady increase in enrollment. You know, from twenty twenty, from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five, we've gone up over three hundred students. We're back to well before FY fifteen in terms of the enrollment of students. This is our changing demographics, and as you can see, this is broken down by high needs groups. Specifically, this is, these are groups that were identified by DESI as high needs. Oftentimes, they need more to make sure that they're able to participate and be successful in, in school. So, as you can see, these numbers, this is the same kind of graph, but I just wanted to put the numbers in so you saw the, the change. From twenty fifteen to twenty, in the last ten years, we've gone up five hundred students for high need students. Our low income students have gone up from, actually, fifty percent. Our students with disabilities have gone from five hundred seventeen to six hundred twenty, a hundred students. When you think that a typical special education teacher has a caseload of twenty-five students with special needs, that's a, that's a teacher. I'm sorry, that's four teachers.
Yeah.
For a hundred. First language not English went up about three hundred, almost three hundred students, and our English language learners have more than doubled, almost tripled, really, in terms of the numbers. And again, when we're looking at making sure that students get what they need, this means we need resources, which typically means we need staff to support our students. Our out of district costs, we've done a lot, as you know, to put supports in our schools to make sure that all of our students stay in Gardner and are with their peers. We do all we can to keep our students in the least restrictive environment. Unfortunately, sometimes they need more. And when they go out of districts, it does have a cost to the district, and it's gone from two hundred, two million, six hundred thousand in twenty eighteen, and now we're up over six million dollars. Sending and receiving for school choice, we are now at somewhat parity with a hundred, we're receiving a hundred and fifty-four students coming into the district with a hundred and fifty-two students leaving the district.
Do we know why?
What's that?
Some of those kids are leaving district.
All kinds of reasons, everything from a teacher teaching in another, you know, a parent teaching in another district.
Yeah.
To.
I know a lot of times it was sports related and stuff, but.
They never say that, so we can't really gather information on that.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, but to have it go from, you know, three hundred students leaving the district.
Mm-hmm.
Down to a hundred and fifty-two, we're definitely going in the right direction. Unfortunately, on the next slide, you still see that it costs more. For sure, anybody care to guess why it costs more for some students to go somewhere else? Mr. Hawke?
Is it because of the online schools?
It is because of the online schools. Online schools are now thirteen thousand dollars. So, instead of paying five thousand dollars to send a student to a physical building in a public school, we are sending, we are paying thirteen thousand dollars for students to do online school. For TECA or.
Wow.
The Academy.
Yeah, it's expensive.
It's a virtual academy.
Is there a reason, like, that almost doesn't make sense?
It almost doesn't make sense. I would agree with that sentiment, except I take the almost out. No, it doesn't, it sounds like it doesn't make sense. There are a lot of costs to it, and it's the full cost of these institutions. So, their only source of income is school choice. So, they have a higher, they have a higher number, and they actually do have teachers who are teaching the students, and yes, it's virtual, but they're live, the synchronous, what we would call synchronous learning. Read a system of the else.
Well, I was gonna say the sending and receiving part is not based, like, it doesn't, it's not comparable to what it costs for a child to go either place either. So, it costs more to educate them than what we're sending or what we receive. Right? You know, and it's like what the, so that's why, like, I'm not saying it makes sense. I'm just saying, like, the school choice piece in general, the sending and receiving amounts don't make sense, because after a while, like, we've talked about this before, like, you're not always breaking even. If, like, sometimes if you take too many kids in, if you're not getting, you're not getting enough money every time they come in, it doesn't cover the costs that they are costing the district, right? So.
Yeah.
Yeah, we still don't, we haven't been accepting students all the way through grade seven. We just can't do it, like, we can't fit the students in.
Right. Go, like, a physical building, someone going to another phys, I, I understand all that.
Yep.
And the different costs.
Yep.
Costs should be so much less.
If I could argue with John, I would.
They do limit how many kids can go.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's true.
It's not limited, school choice.
It's just, you know, this is another example of something that, you know, you're looking at this graph, and it seems like so much money and everything, but you don't understand all the layers of it, and, you know, and I think that's what happens sometimes with the budget, is people aren't understanding the whole big picture of it and what it entails, and it's not easy to do. I'll be quiet now.
Yeah, but I think our goal is just to continue to have that number go down by trying to meet families' needs. Just to go over the, just for the, I know you guys have seen this slide every time, but to go over our budget process, the way we do this is, schools and directors all submit expense budgets to Mark, Mark Hawke, and from there, we actually, we talk about those reductions and additional, any additional staff. So, we actually go through, we, we have them list, give us approximately two hundred thousand dollars, I think it was this year, worth of cuts typically from positions. And what we do from there is, we also say, what do you need that you yet don't have? And they put those on a list. And then, as a group, all the directors and principals all get together in a room, and we have some very energetic, sometimes heated discussions about, what's the first position out of all the positions in the district that's the most important position to go in next? And we do that with each one, so we have a, we have a district prioritized budget. And so, all of us are working together to make sure that we have the best budget for the entire district, not principals working for their individual schools. And so, oftentimes, you know, one of the first, first positions that might go back in is an elementary school teacher. Might be the first one back in the budget, for example. A high school teacher knows that's a big deal where it increases class sizes for all students in that grade if we have one, just one teacher out. Then they meet individually with the business manager, and, yes? Oh, yes. Thank you. Meet individually with superintendent and business manager, and then we meet with all the directors and principals, and we develop that process in the last bullet. We actually didn't do this year because we didn't do that. So, Mark, you want to take over from here?
Certainly.
On this part?
This just shows the restorations, additions, reductions. Two that are highlighted, there's actually four positions there, and those are mandated because we have students come in that have those para, two paras and two RBTs in their IEP. The third one was a vacant position coming into the FY twenty-five budget, so we need to reduce the FY twenty-five budget, so we, the nutrition left it vacant, but it is needed. We have one, two, three, four guys taking care of four buildings and all the grounds. And then the bottom two are additions, a GES kindergarten special education teacher and a GES ESL teacher, English Second Language teacher. So, additions to this year's budget was three hundred twenty-nine thousand. And then we get into a couple slides with just a heck of a lot of numbers on them, showing the salaries over the years and how some things change. Some things you see in information services, which is about two-thirds of the way down, has gone from in FY twenty about two hundred and twelve thousand down to zero. That's because we have outsourced our entire IT department. So, there's some changes like that. The substitutes line, members of the finance committee will know, it's been underfunded. I don't know if it's been intentionally or unintentionally, but we think we have a more appropriate number, which is why there was a thirty-three percent increase in that line. Expenses, same thing, a couple of them will go up and down, but they're mainly flat unless, something like transportation, I don't know if that's ever going to be flat. Costs that do not apply to net school spending, this is for better or for worse, all on the city's dime. And with the new transportation contract, it increased one hundred and seventeen thousand for regular transportation and for special education transportation, two hundred and seventy-two thousand for next year. This does not add an eleventh bus, another bus, which is desperately needed, would be another eighty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars.
For another bus?
For another bus, eighty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars for one hundred maybe days of service.
Should go on the transportation.
Many people are. So, where's the money coming from? We have chapter seventy, the required net school spending, funding over net school spending. Net school spending is the minimum that the municipality is allowed to spend. They can always go more. And then, last year, we had the homeless emergency money. This was the, for the migrant shelter in town, it was a hundred and four dollars roughly per day, and we were able to supplement our budget with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This is not going to be there next year. So, where does all that money go? On the left, you'll see the chapter seventy money. This is new money coming in through chapter seventy of the Student Opportunity Act, two point seven million. Net school spending is seven hundred and fifty-three thousand. We deduct the hundred and sixty thousand from the homeless money that we used last year. And then, hopefully, three hundred thousand over net school spending. And where did it go so quickly? Salary expenses, one point six million. Regular expenses, nine hundred and forty-three thousand. The additions of two hundred and nineteen thousand, the non-net school spending, four hundred and sixty. We take that out because that is included in the expenses. So, half of the expense increase of nine hundred and forty-three thousand is the non-net school spending, or transportation increase. And then, the big one this year was the indirect cost, which we'll get into next. Budgeted indirect costs over the prior fiscal years, you'll see it goes up and down. Trying to, it's indirect costs, the main driver of indirect costs are health insurance, and then the second one, which is far behind it, in retirement expenses. And then, there's other little things in there, the, the school resource officer, the insurance on the buildings and so forth. So, like pitting gel to a wall, one point seven million dollar increase, I don't think anyone saw it coming and took a huge bite out of our budget.
That's pretty typical with most of the schools, school districts around now.
Mainly given my health insurance.
It's up?
Yeah, it's ninety-nine percent health insurance.
The school resource officer said a week period salary for six months or ten months.
Salary and benefits for nine twelves, ten twelves?
Yeah, nine twelves.
Ten twelves. Five, six. So, yeah, we don't pay for the summer. The city picks that up. So, out of that, one point seven three seven million, one million, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand is health insurance. So, balancing the budget. Add up all those numbers, the total funding, the total school budget, non-net school spending, indirect costs, total net school spending, leaves us with a deficit here of four hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. That's counting the mayor's three hundred thousand dollars over net school spending.
So, I just wanted to talk about this slide. So, one of the things that, that's happened is from FY, this is just on the slide. So, there's a blue on the bottom represents the minimum local contribution, and the orange is above minimum net school spending. And if you'll notice, I tried to put lines of best fit for FY twenty through FY twenty-six. So, you'll see that black line on the bottom, that's the best fit for the minimum local contribution, and the green line above is the best line fit for where we were above minimum net school spending. And as you can see, if you remember, this thing called COVID in FY twenty, we got a lot of ESSR funds. And so, what happened was, a lot of our funding was able to be substituted using ESSR funds to get us through and to make sure that we weren't reducing staff, and we were still providing supports, and actually, more supports, considering that all that our families and students were going through. And so, what we need to do, though, is we need to plan to start to get back up above that million dollars above minimum net school spending. The reason I say that is because the minimum net school spending is the least amount you're allowed to legally spend on the schools. However, what we've seen is, most schools need more. There are richer districts that get double the foundation budget. We're not asking for double the foundation budget, but if we can start moving our way up to each year, adding more and more on, so we get to that million dollars above, it's a big deal. I want to give you an example school is Monty Tech. Monty Tech is getting their budget passed at six hundred thousand dollars above minimum net school spending. Six hundred thousand, what was the accurate number there, Mark?
Six hundred and six thousand, four hundred and ten dollars.
And per pupil is?
Four hundred and seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
Four hundred and seven dollars and fifty-three cents. If we had that money for the number of students we have, that'd be about, how much?
One million, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five.
One million, right, yeah.
Yes.
So, that's what we should be shooting for. And actually, having the mayor step up and, and give that extra three hundred thousand is a huge step in this direction. So, I'm thrilled that we're taking that next step to start going above minimum net school spending. And if you notice, way on the right there, that last one, the line of best fit, there's actually some blue above. And the reason that this a little bit more blue and the minimum has gone up is because we're nowhere near what our expected spending is. So, we do need to start infusing more and more each year, thinking of two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand more over what we're doing already, plus whatever the increase is, if we want to get to the level where we have the supports that we need in the schools. Any questions on that? Oh, go ahead.
I'm just saying that slide took place in the four slides.
Tried to condense. All right, and this should kind of shows the, the delta down the bottom, the change in the minimum contribution, the change in the total amounts that we were getting each year. So, that's why that last one is seven hundred and fifty thousand, because the state says you need to start catching up to what you're, what we're expecting you to put into the schools. Okay?
So, as a brief tutorial or refresher of how all of that came together, this is the chapter seventy determination for FY twenty-six. We'll start with number one on the left, the twenty twenty-four equalized valuation. It's updated every two years by the Department of Revenue, and it's the full and fair cash value of all the taxable property in the municipality. Uniform property percentage is applied, the same number for all the communities. You multiply those together, you come up with a local effort from property wealth, the seven point four, five four one million. The twenty twenty-two income, again, from the Department of Revenue, and the uniform income percentage, and I hit the, which is, again, uniform across the board, so you come up with a local effort from income, eight point six million. You add the seven and the eight together to get sixteen, two hundred and eighteen thousand is the combined effort yield, which is the sum of the property and the income effort based on DESI calculated property income percentages. The foundation budget for FY twenty-six is forty-eight million, three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. The maximum contribution, no matter how much the mayor wants to put in, is thirty-nine million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand. So, let's not go hog wild. And then, the state has a target local contribution, sixteen point two million. So, you take the lesser of the maximum of the sixteen point two, which is sixteen point two, and then below that, eleven and twelve are the percentages that those numbers equate to. On the right-hand side, number thirteen, FY twenty-five required local contribution, the municipal revenue growth factor, again, from the Department of Revenue, and multiply those together, and you come up with the FY twenty-six preliminary contribution, which is twenty-seven point eight five percent, which is below their target local share, number eleven on the left side. So, you bring those numbers down, the shortfall is two billion, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, or a five point seven two percent shortfall. So, if it's between two and a half and seven and a half, they add a one percent, I don't want to call it a penalty, I'll say it's a mandated catch-up fee. So, it's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven twenty-five that they add on to our numbers for coming in below what their targets are. So, now, our new shortfall is two point six million, and the required local contribution is thirteen million, five hundred and one, seven fifty-six, or twenty-eight point one one percent. And that's how those numbers are arrived at.
Just a quick note, this is forty-eight million for the foundation budget that includes, I think that was one of the, includes Monty Tech as well.
We are forty-five million and change, Monty Tech is three million and change. So, other, go ahead.
No, did you want to say something?
Yep, this is, you can't turn on the news without hearing something about the federal government, so these are total federal grants that we sort of have baked into the budget. So, it's two million dollars and sixteen and a half rounded up positions. So, I don't know that we are fearful of much of this, perhaps Title Two.
Title Two is a question, yeah.
The other titles and so forth. And this is money that we have now, so going forward, it's just a consideration.
We just wanted people to know what this, what it means. So, Title One, for example, has about eight hundred thousand dollars in teacher salaries. These are, you know, folks who are in, you know, supports who are in the classrooms with teachers. So, that's a big deal when these federal funds get cut.
Just a question, when you have the grant period to September of twenty twenty-six, that's because of the federal budget timeline, right?
Yes, that's right. And if you notice, too, this also supports FHA, HFA, excuse me. HFA, uh, computer, professional development, professional development, and supplies. Okay? So, right now, the funding gap as of today is four hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. That's assuming that is three hundred thousand over net school spending. So, this slide, now, this includes a deficit of zero, so this is the budget that would include even that deficit within the budget. I don't know if there are any questions before we talk about voting?
So, just to be clear, that this number, thirty-seven million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars, would require the city to put in seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars.
And that's basically level services, correct?
That would be with no cuts. If there, if, if the budget has this, has that one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, I will have to cover that through some one-time money and cuts.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, beginning with the members of the school committee, and then opening up the public hearing to any members of the general public. Are there any questions, comments, concerns, or any information that was presented? At this time, is there any questions from the members of the school committee?
When you say one-time money, what do you mean?
Um, anything from, any kind of grants or revolving funds, anything like that. So, those things typically cover your capital improvements. You shouldn't really use them for operational costs, but in this case, we, you know, we may do that, you know, for the short term.
Any other questions, comments from the members of the committee? Mr. Schwartz.
On the Title Four grants, grants, I'm, from what I've been hearing, the president is not going to touch those.
So, from what I heard, he was not touching most of them. Title Two, from what I understand, is, Title Two is typically for professional development, teacher improvement. So, that was, I think, a hundred thousand dollars for us, thereabouts, maybe a little over a hundred and one thousand or something. That may go, and if, if so, I would have to cover some of the PD and figure, figure that out.
So, we have that one through September twenty-sixth at the end of the federal fiscal year.
Yes.
Yep. Any other questions or comments from the members of the committee? At this time, we'll open it up to the members of the general public. Is there anyone here from the general public who wishes to be heard on the matter of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six school budget? Come up, so you name an address for the record.
Amy Doucette, one ninety-two Central Street, apartment one zero five. I wrote down my.
Amy Doucette, Ms. Hellman.
D O U. You're welcome. So, I wrote down a couple of questions. I wanted to know if the costs for online learning, for sending kids out, do those costs also increase for kids who have IEPs that are doing online learning, and does that make it go?
Yes, they, yes, they do. So, some, sometimes, yeah, there's a differential, they call it, yes.
Okay. And then, I also wanted to know about the busing in particular, because I feel like we get a lot of, you know, waiting for a driver, or this bus is now picking up these other kids, buses are running late, and I know there was mention of adding another bus to, or the hope of adding another bus. But how does that also then keep the drivers, too, if we're still having this significant issue with drivers and, like, having to shuffle kids around all the time?
That's, that's a really tough question to answer. I wish I could answer it easily, but unfortunately, it's happening throughout the state. You know, there's some other districts, you know, more towards Boston, which are having even more events. We were fortunate where I don't think really had any events canceled for buses, Mark. Do you know of any?
Not recently, no.
And although, when a bus driver calls in sick, they don't, they're, they're trying to get more and more drivers, I don't know if you've seen the, they even put up like the little, those stanchions or whatever, to try to get people to apply. There's just not a lot of people that, that are applying for the jobs, but they're trying what they, they're doing what they can.
It's a contracted service, too. You don't run the bus company.
Yeah, and that was, that was my concern, too, is like, is it, you know, the agreement or the contract to pay? And is more money enticing, is it not? But then, that led me to another question of the, the district kind of reinforcement behavior plan for the kids. There was a point a couple of years ago where we kind of started getting bus drivers on board with that, and the monitors, too, which I felt was starting to help facilitate some of that connection and keep stuff, well, you know, similar across the board for, for the kids. Is that training still included in the budget, or could there be a wiggle room to bring that back?
Yeah, we still, we still work with them with positive behavior interventions in sports. So, we should be still doing that.
Well, they used to do, like, sometimes with, like, the younger kids, they would also give out, like, class dojo points, cat catch, and things like that as incentives for kids to behave on the bus. And I know one bus driver, too, was even interested in, like, you know, could they have a prize box? box for kids or something to help them engage because of, sometimes the kids are just, they're not okay on the bus or they have a hard time riding it and trying to help with that too.
That, so that's a great suggestion, I'm going to make sure that that continues to happen. That's pretty much cost neutral, that wouldn't, that wouldn't really be a big deal.
Awesome, thank you.
I'll just also say to the school bus cost that you mentioned, we went out for bid this year for our school buses and we got one response. And it had a, Mark, what was the increase?
117,315.
Which was a 50, was the percentage increase, Mark?
Uh, 13.
Yeah, about that number. So that, that increase alone was there and Gardner is not alone on that one. I think if you talk to any city in town, you'll hear that they've received either one bid or one reasonable bid and then a couple unreasonable bids.
Let's just start around.
Yeah, just start around.
The legislature last week just sent a motion requesting Inspector General's office to review bus bids statewide. We'll see if anything goes back from that, but that's just one of the main cost drivers for that.
Legislation?
Is there anyone else here from the general public who wishes to be heard on the topic of the FY26 school budget? Director Hock.
Just one note, I think Dr. Pellegrino wanted to mention the MVP students.
Oh, yes, thank you. This year, we actually have another source of income, which is Chapter 7, don't get too excited, it's Chapter 74, because our kids were in the MVP program with Monty Tech, which has been a great program. Our kids are in juniors and seniors, are participating in electrical and carpentry and we're hoping to expand that to plumbing as well. Seems like a great program. So all that money that comes to us for Chapter 74 goes immediately right to Mount Watch Community Call, oh, sorry, Monty Tech to support their, their learning over there for their courses. So we take care of the academic courses, they take care of the vocational courses. Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz.
On the, the bus bid, was that a cooperative bid or just the city?
Just the city.
I thought in the past that we tried to do a cooperative bid.
That was years ago and it failed completely. We thought if we could have a Boston-type bid or a Framingham-type bid with 30 or 40 buses, it was us, Winchester, Monty Tech, maybe even there against it, and we got zero interest, no bids, so we had to scrap that.
You're monopolizing.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns from the members of the public and the members in the school committee? Twice, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? Third and last, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, I'll hereby close the public hearing. At this time, we'll move on to Item D, a vote on the school budget for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of 37,676,548. Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mrs. Lefrenier to approve the budget as presented by the superintendent at 37,676,548. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. Ms. Hillman, can you call the roll?
Two seconds here, okay. This is a roll call vote and approve the FY26 Gardner High School budget in the amount And we'll call the roll and we'll start with Mrs. Cormier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Hurst.
Yes.
Mr. Lefrenier.
Yes.
This is, Mrs. Ward Layton.
Yes.
Mrs. Palavan.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Yes.
And Mayor Nicholson, do you wish to vote?
Yes.
You'll vote, yes, okay, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Item E, the consent agenda, a motion carries and passes, thank you all very much, should have said that. Moving on to Item E, the consent agenda, this was included in your packet, is there a motion on the floor regarding the consent agenda, Ms. Lefrenier? Is there a second on the motion? Motion made by Mrs. Lefrenier, seconded by Ms. Ward to approve the consent agenda as presented, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item F, subcommittee reports, beginning with the finance subcommittee, Ms. Lefrenier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The finance committee met on April 3rd. Let's see, we discussed the expense report, the committee asked questions regarding the report and Mr. Hock answered them. Usually it's, it's pretty much most of those questions were part of that presentation for the budget. Let's see, project update, the Gardner High School auditorium is 99% complete, maybe by now 100%, I don't know.
Is it 100% done now, Mark?
Not 100% done.
Now they have one too.
Okay, very close. And we have a proposal for an overhaul of the elevator at Gardner High School. The elevator is the original elevator to the building, it's having repeated breakdowns. So that's going to be a fairly big cost, but again, it is the original elevator and it comes to a point where you're just throwing money at it and money at it and money at it. So eventually, what you spend to fix it's going to be more than the cost of rebuilding. New business, as the committee reviewed, and an updated budget, again, this is something that was just presented. And while all schools held expenses to approx, approximately the same as last year, the costs associated with the consolio contract, transportation, Chromebooks, were the biggest expense drivers. And that was it for our discussion.
Ms. Lefrenier, is there any discussion on the finance committee's, finance subcommittee's report? Seeing none, moving to the policy subcommittee, Mrs. Hurst.
The policy committee met on March 12th. We reviewed several policies that were just, didn't need any changing or updating and remarked as reviewed. We had four that we needed to table for our next meeting, does it require some more information? And tonight, there is policies for first read. I think there's five for first read tonight.
Any questions on the policy subcommittee report? Seeing none, we'll move on. Our student advisory board member is not here with us this evening, so we'll move on to Item H, discussion items for new business, item number 3688, first reading of policies, BBAA, school committee member authority, BBBA, school committee member qualifications, BBBC, school committee member resignation, BDE, subcommittees of the school committee, these are included in your packet for informational purposes this evening to be voted on at our next meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns on those items? Moving on to Item 3689, second reading of policies, there's a vote required on this item, JKAA, physical restraints, the policy subcommittee recommends acceptance of this policy, is there a motion on the floor?
Motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cormier, to accept the policy as presented, is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item number 3690, BDE, athletic council, this is a recommendation by the policy subcommittee to be moved to the district procedural manual. Is there dis, a motion, a motion made by Ms. Ward, is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Hurst, any discussion on that motion?
I think technically it's a motion to remove the policy because it's going to be going into the procedural manual.
Okay.
What were you saying?
No, 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 no.
Motion to remove and remove to procedural manual.
Motion has been, has a friendly amendment to remove from the policy manual and send it to the district procedural manual, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item number 3691, appointment of Keystone Collaborative.
Would you like me to give a speech? No?
Not tonight, no.
No, I'm happy to, I'm happy to stay on as the Keystone Collaborative representative, if, if you want me to be the representative.
I'll make a motion to nominate him.
Well, let's turn to Palavan, no.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Ms. Ward to appoint Dr. Pellegrino as our Keystone Collaborative appointee, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item number 3692, appointment of CAPS collaborative representative.
I motion that we have Dr. Pellegrino do that, because he does it so well.
Is there a second? Motion made by Attorney, uh, motion made by Mrs. Hurst, seconded by Attorney Palavan to appoint Dr. Pellegrino to the board of the CAPS collaborative on behalf of the district, is there any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item number 3693, the CAPS collaborative agreement with the district.
No major changes really to it, just cleaning up of wording and creating a, you know, a better worded document.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Move to it now.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Mrs. Cormier to adopt the CAPS collaborative agreement as presented, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item number 3694, competency determination.
So this is, as you know, MCAS is no longer allowed to be used as a competency determination, which is something that students need, students need to pass certain courses in order to graduate and they need to have a competency determination as per regulations by, from the state. So with that said, we had to come up with language around this and so my proposal is that right now, we keep it somewhat simple because we also know that DESI right now has a, a, a committee of people looking at this and will be changing this going forward. But we need someone, we need something right now for the class of 2025 and for the next maybe year after that. So my recommendation, after talking with several of the superintendents and working with some of them on some of this language, basically they would need to have three competency standards. The first one is for ELA, English, so they can, if they passed the MCAS before July 2024, which means that before everything ended this past, in December, we can still count that score. If they didn't earn that, or hadn't taken the test, then they can earn a passing grade, they need, earn a passing grade in English 9 and English 10 or their course equivalents and the, the principal decides what is a course equivalent. Same thing for math, they can pass the test with a 486 or higher, as long as it was before July 2024, or earn a passing grade in geometry and algebra or their course equivalents. And finally, in science, they have to, they can again, pass the MCAS or take biology, chemistry or physics or an equivalent. Students who fail to meet those, to meet one or more of those requirements will be monitored and supported in grades 11 and 12 on their progress in the specific subjects. They can pass classes relevance in the subjects in grades 11 and 12, or they can make a coursework, coursework in grades 10 and 11 to also meet the standard, standard of master curriculum
Are there any questions, comments on the superintendent's proposal and/or motion of Mrs. Ward?
I just had a question, so I was thinking to the mass core and how it's usually like four years of English, four years of math and whatnot, is that, I guess I'm just wrapping my head around, is that still going to apply, like they're still going to be required to take those full four years of English, for example, in high school?
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely, yes. They still have to pass the courses.
Okay.
But they don't have to, I'm sorry, yeah, they have to pass the courses, but they also have to do these specific courses.
Okay, got you, so like if they, you know, English 9 and 10 and then they take like, I don't know, like Gothic literature and then like creative writing, that would, okay, got you, all right, just wanted to wrap my head around that part, thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments, concerns on the proposal or a motion on the floor?
Motion that we accept, sir.
Motion made by Mrs. Lefrenier, seconded by Mrs. Schwartz to accept the competency determination as presented, is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Item number 3695, curriculum, curriculum coordinator update, this was included in your packet for information, is there any questions, comments, concerns on the update? Seeing none, moving on to item number 3696, the grant administrator update, this was included in your packet for information, is there any questions, comments, concerns from the members of the committee? Seeing none, moving on to item number 3697, the special education update, this was included in your packet this evening for information, are there any questions, comments, concerns from the members of the committee?
It was just, it was good to see the parent turnout for that latest workshop. Yeah, 11 parents attended, which I think is higher than it's normally been for these events.
Any other questions, comments, concerns on the special education coordinators update? Thank you, Director West. Item I, communications, Dr. Pellegrino.
The other thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, obviously, you know, Paula Bulger stepping down as the principal of the high school is, you know, very difficult. She's a phenomenal person, phenomenal principal, but for personal reasons, she decided to step down. She may still be in the district another way, we don't know what the future will hold, but she isn't, has been the best principal Gardner High School has ever seen. Hard for me to say considering I was one of the principals of Gardner High School, but she is absolutely the best principal we've seen, she's done a great job. But I'm also really pleased that with the leadership pipeline that we have through the bar grants, you know, Mike, has really stepped, Michael Barkus has really stepped up as a leader of the building and he's really been learning a lot and will be a wonderful replacement for Ms. Bulger. So to have somebody right behind her, ready to go, to continue on with the work they've been doing, considering they went from the 24th to the 47th percentile, they've done a phenomenal job and I want, I want to make sure that that continues in that direction. And so I'm thrilled that Michael will accept the position as the principal of the high school. And that's all I wanted to talk about.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to Item J, final comments in the school committee, Ms. Ward.
Awesome. No comments other than thank you for the presentation and for answering our questions about the budget and for all of the things that are normally included, Dr. West and Ms. Gogan and Courtney, and other than that, just happy to see some sunshine and some warm weather, rather than six inches of snow, which was, what, 40, 48, 72 hours ago, so, yeah.
At least it was on a Saturday.
Yes, yeah. And that's all, thanks folks.
Mrs. Hurst.
I came across this quote from someone, it said that finding humor in tough situations is important, but it's also important to understand how some things that might be just a minor inconvenience for some can be devastating for the poor, disabled and elderly. Let's try to look out for each other. And I think, like with the budget tonight, it's hard, it's hard all the time, but we have to understand the broader spectrum of things and I think that it's easy for, you know, someone to get kinda, you know, terse about things and be like, well, what do I pay taxes for? Well, you know, it's, it's beyond that. You need to educate yourselves, you need to understand all the different components. The, you know, taking away certain federal funding impacts a bunch of little things under that umbrella that most people aren't even aware of and it can be very devastating, especially with families who are trying to piece together services for a disabled loved one. Also anxiety and mental health is, is huge right now and I can't reiterate that enough, ask people if they're okay, just, just ask and just be kind.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurst. Attorney Palavan.
Um, so this past weekend, I was able to see the Willy Wonka junior presentation at the middle school, which was affected a little bit by the snow. But the kids did a great job. I missed the Fiddler on the Roof presentation because I wasn't able, I was actually out of town, but to see all the kids that participate, it's amazing, like in discussion around the budget, when you see all of these pieces, like every single dollar goes to something that is to one of the kids in our district that is helping them in some way, right? And being able to participate in all the activities and everything, that makes the well-rounded student, which actually makes them able to be able to learn better and does make the process of teaching and everything else that much easier. But they did, they did a great job this weekend. Yeah, and I think it's amazing that we're able, like, we have been keeping all of these different projects and other things up so that the kids can participate and I think that's something important that we need to keep doing in Gardner.
Mrs. Schwartz.
Opa, opa, opa. I attended as well, Friday, my wife and I, Saturday night, the last show. And it was amazing, that was. That was their second show for the day. Did an outstanding job. And thanks to the parents that participated with all the refreshments and everything. That was a good addition to, rather than just sitting on your rear and watching a play. They had a lot of things to eat and to drink, which was great. And the teacher that was the visionary, I can't remember his name, but the visionary did a great job. They had some great assistants to make a terrific program for the parents and anyone who wanted to watch the play. Outstanding. It was really great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, and congratulations to Mr. DeBilly. Mr. LaFreniere.
Nothing to say, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Cormier.
I just appreciate the budget presentation. You know, it's a little uncomfortable, it doesn't always make everybody happy. I wish it was a little more positive, but I think we do the best with what we have. And I really appreciate all the work you guys put into that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things this evening. Congratulations to all of our students who were in our recent musicals and concerts and MICA shows and everything else in between for all of the different, and our sports teams. Our students are busy this time of year. And they're doing a really good job being busy like that with the performances that they're doing in all venues that they have. So thank you very much to all of our students for your dedication. Congratulations on what you've accomplished. I just wanted to make everyone aware, the city recently entered into an articulation agreement with Clark University for all of our employees who want to get a master's in public administration. The agreement's something that several other communities in the Commonwealth have signed on to with them to get a forty percent discount for any employee who wants to get their MPA from Clark as a way to help with their professional development, and that does cover all of their books. So that's something that we're now offering to all of our employees. And we're working with Mount Wachusett Community College right now with the Mass Connect Free Community College program to do that for all of our employees who don't have an associate's degree yet as well. Really, it's all stuff on their own. It doesn't cost the city a dime for either program. And it's just, it allows them to have a flexible schedule on the course and with the financial benefit with it too, just to make things easier for our employees. So it's something extra that we can now offer to all of the employees for the city. And I want to thank Representative Zolnic, who made us, gave us that connection, is he's a alum of that program through the legislature. And then my favorite time of year is around this time, I got to start signing the diplomas for upcoming graduations. And I know Mrs. Cormier's doing the same thing too. And I just want to say an early congratulations to all the students. Like every name, when you flip to sign another page, like normally, you sign a bunch of papers and you look like to see where you're at the end. But like every diploma that you sign, it's a different student who went through a bunch of different, you know, scenarios and circumstances and everything to get to that point where their name's finally printed on that piece of paper. So it's just exciting for me and I'm really proud of our students who do that. So just, it's my favorite time of year when that like hits the desk, even though the stack is like this big. But that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Now, don't forget if I have the special pen.
The special pen to sign them, that's right. We pass the pen around too, so everyone has the same one. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Moving on, there's no executive sessions this evening. Our next meeting is Monday, May twelfth at six thirty PM here in the city council chamber. And is there a motion on the floor to adjourn? Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much.